...for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call please. Mayor Hasler, Alderwoman Clydesdale.
Here.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Ithman.
Here.
Alderman Reiny.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderwoman Armbruster.
Here.
Um, Mayor.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you.
Mayor, I was like a goose egg. It was a first round call, sir. All right, I'll call for the approval of the agenda.
No approval.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Take us to the city administrator's report.
Well, we have an updated report at your seat. Item three, David Christensen is going to be here in June on the June nine work session to talk about the pavement for Fenty Maintenance Plan. So he discussed costs and issues with the roads and what it sees, so it's going to be a little more in-depth view of what he's looking at and how he wants to lay things out for us for improvements. So expect that in June. And then the concrete compression breaks for Parkwood, we've got two of them, and both over 5,000, sorry, over 4,000 PSI, and that is good news. So once the rain stops, we can start breaking concrete up again and get that project back underway as quickly as we got that first section done. We look to do the same thing with that next section. And again, it has to be blocked off for a while so we get a chance of the concrete to cure, but it should be a pretty quick project to get done.
Happy back on item three and stuff, but still Cochran, that's just visual.
Yes.
Checking that he's doing, no test cores, no...
We discussed the problems that we've encountered with the streets. He says, well, it's probably all over town. Best thing to do is, by looking at it, he knows what needs to be, what streets are the worst off, and his feeling is that you mobilize in one area. Because we talked about the roads up in International Subdivision in particular. He said, yeah, they're probably not in great shape, but it would be best to do the core drilling and that when you get into that neighborhood, do a little bit of engineering beforehand so you know what you're working with, and then decide how you're going to do improvements and if you have to make any changes at that time. He's of the same opinion that I've been looking at, is if we can just pave over what's existing, that would give us at least a base, but those streets are to the point that they're just almost totally deteriorated, so that could be a problem when you're moving into that neighborhood. So we'll look at that. And that's the stuff you can talk to him about, you can kind of explain what his philosophy is on that.
So is he going to change the priority list that we previously made?
So we prioritize every year. So yes, he will, but we don't have one that we've scheduled out for the next 10 years.
Right.
His will be, this, what you'll see is like five years out. If we go with the plan, then he'll schedule it all the way out and you'll see what the costs are. It's the cost that are going to shock you to improve roads in a neighborhood.
Yeah. Now, you talked about coring, so is that something in addition we will look at as each road comes up in the list, or...
Probably, you know, if we, unless we go with what's there, we assume it's there. Yeah, then we record that road, see what kind of depth there is. If we've got two inches, four inches, what kind of bases under it. Most cars, I know in International, are going to be two inches under, you know, with dirt underneath. Which is not a bad thing, because we found out with Parkwood, it wasn't, you know, that we had voids, that there was, the dirt had gone away, it was just that the water and ice got underneath the pavement, and that's part of all the problems. And the asphalt didn't help because it wasn't resolving that issue.
Yeah, speed bumps is what they were.
Yeah, well, you're going to look at it on that, yeah. Yes.
So on both five and seven, the seal coating for Progress Parkway, and then you mentioned needing to seal the manmade breaks, and those will have to be kind of on a schedule or whatever. So in two years, we'll have to do those breaks on Parkwood, and then a five-year schedule for the seal coating on the trail on Progress. Is there, do you keep a, like a, some sort of file? That, what I'm asking is like, how will future boards remember to work that into the budget?
We're working in on the 10-year capital plan. We haven't put it in there, well, I have put the seal coating in five years from now. So that'll be on the five-year plan, so we'll know when we get to that year that we need to put that as part of our improvement project. The other stuff, the other stuff, that's going to be part of the preventive maintenance plan we can talk about, as a sealing cracks, because we don't have a crack sealer. And it's a cost that would be, that the city could incur to properly maintain the streets.
But you're talking about sealing cracks on concrete, not on asphalt?
Oh, everything. If you go out to Progress Parkway now, so we've got the trail all nice and sealed, looks good, where all the grass is coming up in the cracks, looks good, you drive down going to the west, and you'll see where we didn't get to the crack sealing last year, and there's grass growing up. We've got to get that taken down.
I thought we had a way to seal cracks out there.
We have a couple small, little push-around cars that run off a propane tank, but nothing substantial.
Right.
Because you need to clean them out first, then you need to lay that asphalt crack sealer. So yes, we do have a plan on keeping track of that, so future moves, I want to do. And that may be also, that is also part of the preventive maintenance plan, is it talks about crack sealing. So you have that listed as to what streets you need to do that on.
Awesome.
Anything else?
Takes us to staff reports. Steve?
Evening, everyone.
Hello.
First thing, I'm going to read my report again, and I think it's on page six, the sewer collection system, the jetting number's wrong, we did not jet 54,000 feet. Fifty-four, it's got an extra zero there, so, there's a typo in that one. For that reporting period, we did have a water main break on Market and Fifth, catched iron lines up against a valve, we went ahead and we got that fixed. Down off the back of Virginia in the sewer easement, also, we had a forced main that broke, split about five feet of the pipe, we cut the section out, replaced it. It's not that big of a deal, we were able to shut the lift station off while we completed the repairs. We were notified by a guy that mows the grass back there, so, so that was repaired as well. Last month, we had quite a few storms that came through, lots of storm cleanup, at least pretty much once a week, seemed like. All the saws and equipment worked very well, brush site filled up very quickly. Project-wise, Bruce Terry and his crew stopped in the water plant, re-familiarized himself with the project. Citizens has yet to move the pole. I assume they're waiting on Bruce Terry to have the needed parts to hook up the temporary connection. So as soon as he receives his inventory, then he'll proceed. Bowman's was given the notice to proceed, that'll be on May 31st for the water line project, and then following that'll be the street project. Any other questions?
Steve, under distribution, you had a high-vac system had to be replaced. What is that?
What is it?
Under distribution, you had a high-vac system that had to be replaced, or an HVAC, sorry.
That's the, um, the furnace. What's that?
Maintenance shed?
Yeah, it's the maintenance building, so.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening.
You having a hard report?
We did jet 54,000 feet, so, pretty happy with that.
What did you get?
Probably the major thing online, we did have a personnel change since the last meeting. Kyle Weiss resigned to go do something other than law enforcement, and we have replaced him with an eight-year veteran from the Perryville Police Department that he had worked his work with before and will be working with again. He was comfortable with the guy, and I think he'll, I think he'll be a good addition. Chris Bradford is his name, he's a drug recognition expert, a DRE, which is, which is pretty prestigious in our line of work, so I think it'll be good, I think he'll be a good proactive addition to the department, so. Other than that, I think everything's moving, moving right along. So, does anybody have any questions? All right, thank you.
Committee reports?
Couple notes from our board. We have our first movie in the park coming up on June 4th. That's, the movies are typically the first Saturday of the month, so we'll have the first one on June 4th. And then our July movie is moved from that Saturday to the first Friday, so it'd be July 1st. We were approached by the organizers for the fireworks event, and they said that they couldn't get a date other than July 2nd for that weekend. So in order to allow the community to have that event, Parks have moved their movie event to that Friday, so. Other than that, I think that's about it. Steve's got, the guys working on some signs to put up out of Valley Springs Park, going to let the public know about the trail changes that'll be coming in the next year. And then he noted at the park board meeting that they will have to keep up with some level of maintenance, more than expected throughout the year, just with as much rain as we've had and the weeds growing up, but I don't think it'd be an issue. And then, other than that, I think that's about it.
We did have another fire committee meeting with the fire department. We did bring in an outside source to discuss some different avenues. I thought it was really productive and stuff, for the exception of we had storms that night, and most of our fire department members, due to lack of staffing, had to leave the meeting and go take care of business and stuff, but working on some new ideas, some possible changes, how to keep the department up and running and staff and finance. Hopefully soon we'll have something to bring to the board to look at. That takes us to public comments. Public comments? All right. Then at 6:12, we'll have a public hearing. The mayor and board of Alderham will hold a public hearing to consider a request from Claire Bowman and Armando Vizar for a special use permit to allow guest lodging at 89 Sarafin Street and an R2 general residential district.
So, Mr. Bowman is not here this evening, so I gave you some of the information that he passed on to me about this. We've been through this process a number of times with different homes. So he went through the usual list of items to, for me to cover. We sent it to the police department for their review, fire department for their review, so you haven't gotten the King Navy back. Got it publicized in the newspaper as required. The recommendation for planning and zoning is approval, with approval. We have a public hearing tonight, or we do, once at this meeting, again at the next meeting. No neighborhood comments, so we haven't heard anything from the neighbors that are against it, but they would be against it, so it looks like another, another one that is a positive, can be a positive influence for the city.
This was not used prior to for guest lodging?
I don't believe so. No, I wouldn't, wouldn't be able to answer. Doctor Bowman?
Claire's with my mom, I'm here in her absence if anyone has any questions for me. But, yeah, we just finalized the purchase of the property, and I've been doing some yard work, and we're just excited to start furnishing the place pending approval, obviously. But can I answer any questions, if anyone has any?
Non, I'm good.
I'd have one question. Happy, when there's a property that's set up for this, and the ownership decides not to use it anymore for guest lodging, is there a process we have to go through, or is it just go away?
It would just go away.
Okay.
There's another question. We'll close the public hearing at 6:15. Takes us to the consent agenda.
Correction on the consent agenda. On the street closure for Lynn Drive, on the agenda it says 3 to 5, but on the paperwork it says 3 to 9, so.
And so, Jared, it's 9 PM, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to amend the agenda to state the street closure from 3 PM to 9 PM.
What are the darkness, school opening back after dark, so...
But that way it'll, it'll match your application.
That's a good idea.
Thanks, Ashley.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? From Paris. Takes us to old business. Second reading of bill number 4492, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, amending Schedule III parking restrictions, Table III, E, handicap parking except for below.
Motion to approve? Second.
We have a roll call vote, please.
Alderwoman Clydesdale.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Ithman.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent, bill number 4492 now becomes ordinance 4416.
Thank you. Takes us to new business. I'll have the first reading of bill number 4495, an ordinance approving a special use permit for Claire Bowman and Armando Vizar that will allow guest lodging at 89 Sarafin Street.
Move for... Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for second. Is that the one? No.
All right, we'll also do a first reading of bill number 4496, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to sign a special warranty deed that transfers ownership of 49.04 acres along Progress Parkway from the St. Genevieve County Catholic Church Real Estate Corporation to the city of St. Genevieve, and authorizing a future access easement.
Motion to approve? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading of bill number 4496, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to sign a special warranty deed that transfers ownership of 49.04 acres along Progress Parkway from the St. Genevieve County Catholic Church Real Estate Corporation to the city of St. Genevieve, and authorizing a future access easement.
Motion to approve? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading of bill number 4496, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to sign a special warranty deed that transfers ownership of 49.04 acres along Progress Parkway from the St. Genevieve County Catholic Church Real Estate Corporation to the city of St. Genevieve, and authorizing a future access easement.
Motion to approve? Second.
We have a roll call vote, please.
Alderwoman Armbruster.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Ithman.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderwoman Clydesdale.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent, bill number 4496 now becomes ordinance 4417.
Thank you. Any other business? All right, any other communication? I do have something from the mayor, actually. He wanted me to pass along that the VFW is holding a Memorial Day event on Monday morning at 10:30 AM. Everyone on the board is welcome to attend. If you are going to attend, please give Betty Arnold a call so she can be recognized, and I have Betty's contact info. If anybody's able to make it, can just let me know after the meeting, please. Anybody have anything else? For approval of the agenda?
No approval. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, happy.
So we had a landlord request. Michael Bonia was asking about a couple of things. One was our deposit, and the other was water bill. On the deposit, it's because the landlord is responsible, if they, if the renter does not pay their bill in full, they skip out, then the landlord has to pay off that bill so that we'll turn water back on. Now, if we would collect it later, because they've decided to move somewhere else, and they moved back in town, and we make them pay that deposit, it would be front of the property on the back. That doesn't happen often. So his request was for us to review what our deposit is, so that we can cover that better, based on what our average is for most people that don't, don't pay their bills, which we looked at $140 is kind of what our, what our average is, based on what's in the system, plus a $40 reconnect fee. So it's going to be about $170. So in that vein, it's like, well, let's look up and see what other cities are doing. Because I figured that would be the first question, what we've seen other cities do for their deposits. So they're anywhere from $100 to $180, almost $200 for Crystal City. So our $100 is not out of line, it just depends on what kind of burden you want to put on people to sign up for water. Some of these cities have electric as well. I've separated out any deposit that would include the electric company. Some of them, $100 for water, then $125 for electric. So this is one of the, for homeowners, that amount can be less. And then the reconnect fees, anywhere from, what, $20 to $30. So there's no consistency, it's not like you can figure out exactly a number that matches what, what the average is for all these companies. It just depends on what kind of burden you want to put on a renter. Do you think it's important for the city to cover more of that water bill with a higher deposit, or should the city keep that as it is because it may be too much of a burden for some people?
But, really, they're asking us to take the burden off of the landlord.
I mean, that's...
Right, that's what they're asking.
That's the request, yeah.
And you just heard from one landlord recently?
Yeah.
Yeah. Personally, I think the $100, that to me is fine, and I don't think we should put a burden on other people because of a few delinquencies, but that's my feelings.
And that's just one of the things that the state allows you to do, is to put that bill back on the landlord. Now, we did find out in our, in our system, we can send duplicate bills, so we can keep them up to date. So if you're okay with us doing something alone ourselves, we can, we can start that. That's not an issue. I mean, it's mailing costs, so 53 cents or whatever. But we're willing to do that, or if we can mail, we're willing to mail it in. Yeah, but I think so.
On an average month, I mean, with renters only, not people occupying their own home, how many renters do we have that are delinquent?
We're usually, I'd say about 40 to 45.
That are delinquent?
Yeah. We're shutting, we're going off into about 40 to 45 people who turn water off. Those are all the delinquents. Now, as in, those that skip town and don't pay, I didn't do a calculation on that, so we can check, but...
Some of those could be homeowners too, though, right?
Yeah.
No, I was just looking for renters.
Yeah. I don't know what that number really is.
Right, but it's not the entire party?
No.
Right. Yeah. I think the hundreds enough, but...
Because in theory, the landlord is also getting a deposit from the renter. He could be using part of that to take off the burden.
Now, we also, Market's also drafted an agreement for, a requirement for the landlord to have the renter sign off, knowing that they're allowing the city to send a duplicate bill to the landlord, so that they're aware of it, and also put it in their lease. So again, there is the agreement that they, we can do this, we just don't want to, just do it on our own.
I'm sure if they're delinquent on their water bill, they're delinquent on rent. So how does the electric company do that? I mean, they charge a deposit. That deposit is basically to the landlord or to the renter? Do we know?
I mean, I...
She's like whoever the meter's in.
Yeah.
It's what?
Whoever's the name the meter's in.
Probably the same as us. It's going to be a certain amount that you sign up for, same with gas company. Okay, moving on to Cap Grant.
Thank you very much.
So, last year's transportation, that turn of these program funds, like $1.3 billion. This year, for the southeast region, it is going to be about $6.3 million. It's on a two-year cycle, so it'll be two-year cycle, but it is higher than what it's been in the past. So this is for sidewalks, calming type of projects, something on, on the streets that, that we can create better sidewalks, more mobility, more accessibility. When you talk trails, you get bicycles and pedestrians, but we, we're trying to figure out a way to, what do we want to do to apply, what area do we want to apply for? So we've kind of had this work with the Park Service and the River Trails Commission to determine the best way to get routes from downtown to the community center site. So we've kind of been filling gaps and eventually seeing that we need to put sidewalks out on St. Mary's Lane, or St. Mary's Road. When Dave Christensen came in town the other day, we were talking about the preventing program, he said, we need to some of the Market Street. That's, that's exactly what we need to. I'm like, yeah, okay, I agree, but I know where we would like to make connections, and I can support it with data and information, public hearings. So my first thought was, Fourth Street, where it ended on the east side, and get that connected to Rojer. So that gets us from downtown on all these sidewalks. You have sidewalks that run the whole route, that may not be the best, especially in front of Mill, but that would then connect you to Rojer, which has a sidewalk, which means you cross the street, you're over on M Highway, you're on a sidewalk, that gets you out to Progress Parkway eventually, you may have to cross the highway, and that would get you down to the community center. Because we don't have any other way in between, there's nothing on 61 and 032, there's no way to connect to that and then have a, have a trail out there. So that was one, that's one alternative. We could look at something in St. Mary's, we could, we could try to do Market Street if you want to redo those sidewalks out there. It will require that we have a match, so it's an 80/20, and it can be even less for the, for the Fed, I think it'd be 75/25, or that'll increase your points, if you're interested in us pursuing. So if you think the Fourth Street one is the best one, or you'd rather have us look at something else, I would want to work with Cochran. I would want to work with Cochrane. They are approved already through MODOT to do these types of projects. We don't have to go out for an RFQ on this because it's already been done by the Missouri Department of Transportation. Because one of the things that they have set up is that type of ability for the cities to make those kinds of choices. We've got to work in a relationship with them as well. So I've worked with them on other projects like this and they do a good job. Most of it, all of it was infestous. But...
As far as sidewalks, wouldn't there have to be some land acquisition or...
That's potential.
Acquisitions or something?
See, at that point, 32 is fairly large. It's an 80-foot right-of-way. So I think it's 80-foot right-of-way and 36-foot page. So you've got a lot of room, there's potential.
I'm talking more like St. Mary's Road or Market Street.
Yeah, well, that's a large right-of-way. Once you hit Seraphim and start working your way out, I think there's a lot of homework there.
Good feedback.
So we can look at it a little closer and see where that works. Because at this point, we've looked at cutting through Jurnipet, the park grounds, crossing the bridge, and then getting it on the other side over by the green tree and then running it along there. But you've got a problem area because there's this rocky embankment on that house that's at the corner. But that'd be the perfect spot, get you right up to the Amaro House, and eventually you want to give it out to 61.
I would really like for us to explore that.
Yeah. Especially where we have the most foot traffic, you know, now and that would be...
And I see students from the school up here. I see them jogging. So this is why I was saying 4th Street because that's where I see a lot of traffic up there. But it's not going to be cheap because you've got a ditch to fill. You've got the pipeline, a lot of stormwater. But we've been looking for input, what would your priority be? We have to have this in. If we do it on the state highway, it has to be in by June 30th so they can review it. It's technically not due until middle of July, but they want to review and make sure that what we're asking for on their right-of-way is allowing for, gets in with what they're looking at for future planning.
So is there any idea of what type of grant, dollar-wise, we would receive or...
No, it would depend on what the project would cost. That would be the one thing that I'd look with Cochrane's coming up with that totally.
Right.
Because it's federal money. It's state-sponsored, looking at prevailing wages, but it's a little more complicated than just prevailing wages in Missouri. You've got, again, the stormwater that you'd have to do, the concrete. And it is a two- to three-year process. It does not go quickly. It takes time to draft it, submit it, and then you wait. And it goes through all these steps. By 2026, maybe we have a finished sidewalk.
So is these grants usually all or nothing? What you ask for, if you ask for $500,000, might you get $250,000 or...
Usually you're going to submit, the maximum that you can get on this is $500,000. Whereas in the past, it was $400,000. So we could go up. We wouldn't ask for anything more than... And that's where you can make your decision on if you want to put in more money from the city as opposed to that. You kind of gauge what you think the, what MODOT will approve. So they usually don't give you a portion. It's either approved or not approved. Because you can't really, you don't want to just do a portion of it because you may not end up in a good spot. So you've got to be able to finish that section that you engineered so you're not ending up with some complicated issue by splitting it at home.
I was just kind of curious if we asked for X number of dollars, you know, is there a chance that we don't get all of it, we may get part of it or...
Now, you either get it or you don't. You know, somebody else would give it, or just put that money, distribute it elsewhere.
So is this stretch, is this going by the Legion Hall or is it connecting here by the bridge to Cedar? Because it says 4th Street sidewalk where it stops just south of Cedar.
Yeah, it stops south of Cedar and it goes towards, I'm trying to keep it on that side, on the east side of the road. West side goes to Legion. East side stops early, it stops like three houses down from Cedar. So I was looking at stretching that out to Rojer.
Yeah, because now some of those kids have to cross right there where the sidewalk ends. I've seen them. Of course, some of them are up in subdivision, you know, to the right and stuff. But it would be nice to have a nice crosswalk there noted, you know, kind of like we did in back of the hospital for safety.
Right.
And would St. Mary's Road qualify?
It should.
You have any idea on footage? Cost per foot?
No. It'll be fine. I haven't done any calculation on that. I haven't worked with anybody, so I wouldn't venture a guess at this point.
Because that's something Cochrane will be looking at footage and...
So my request here is that we pick something and go with. Because I don't have time to come back. Here's the difference between the two. And move forward with it. We kind of need to move on one, or none of them, either way.
I was thinking the same thing.
I just hear from so many people in our ward especially about St. Mary's Road. And the thing with up here is they can cross. I mean, through that crosswalk, and there's still a connection. You just have to cross. But with St. Mary's Road, there's nothing and there's a lot of foot traffic with all the activity that's going on just around Seraphim. I just think that would be, it's where there's nothing and there's something.
I mean, I'm fine with going after either of those projects with the grant. I do get curious about, like, the responsibility for upkeep. Because right now, the biggest argument that I hear about sidewalks is, "Why isn't the city fixing this one?" Well, it's property owner's responsibility by our ordinances. And in order for the city to take over, it's going to be a lot of land acquisition madness, right? That would be pretty costly.
At the extent of water.
Yeah, so versus, I think I'm just preparing myself for the comments from people that'll say, you know, "Why are we doing this new project instead of dealing with what we have on there?" Which I see the benefit of going after these, don't get me wrong. I'm just preparing myself in this discussion for the arguments against our current sidewalk policies. And how this might force us to find a way to change our current ordinances or develop a plan for that to some degree, so...
But this money can't be used for replacing existing sidewalks?
Unless it can be, but you have to... Yeah, you're looking at sidewalks and curving that you would have to do, but you can't do just patches. You'd have to do a stretch. You have to go from point to point. You have to, what is the justification for doing that?
And newer projects are probably, I know on some of the grants like this, the newer projects are more ideal in some cases.
I mean, we could look at from, because we don't know what's going to happen with the bridge yet. That grant response is supposed to be by the end of the month, which is Tuesday. So we'll see if we hear by the end of the month. Because we could say from the end of the bridge and just take it down to where MODOT stopped at the, where the maintenance stops. We could do that, but I don't know how to tie in what will happen with the bridge. But yeah, you could look at doing something along those lines. You could try to put it on both sides of 4th Street there. There's some right-of-way you can work with. It might not be as difficult, but again, even in stormwater issues, it'd be awful west side.
You know, because both of the sidewalk projects that have been done recently, you know, they were all new and I don't know, they were some type of grants, both of those.
So St. Mary's to schools were. So those are the ones up on Fifth and Sixth. Yeah, Washington, I think.
Eighth Street.
Eighth Street, yeah. So, yeah. And then you've got, is there anything else? And the section that's out on 32 now, that was done for there. I have the easy choices.
So you're saying it's one or the other?
Well, it's one or the other because of the grant sidewalk. We're just kind of, not at the edge, but we just need to work over through this. And I can't delay it by saying, "Let's look at this and look at this." Now, maybe get some prices and see, but if I can't move forward with it, then I don't know what kind of time it's going to take the engineer to draft a plan to get it submitted, or we put this application together, get it to... If you have to get it from MODOT by the end of the month, in the June, or middle of July.
But we won't get the money till 26.
You won't get the money, well, okay, so you get, it takes a while for them to review it. So you find out, I think in September. You'll get the money at the end of the project. So yeah, you figure 26 when it's finished.
So is this a yearly?
This is by year, so it's every two years in this case.
So if we do one this time, we could apply for the second one for two years?
Oh, I know another one. Parker's Parkway.
By Little Rock. The sidewalk to Little Rock?
Yeah, sidewalk, yeah. That was a different grant, but that was the same type of thing. The sidewalk, you see on Parker's Parkway, that was a tap project. And what they did was they linked the playground up on top to the water park down below. That was their big push. And that was something that's important when they're rating these projects. So they like that connection. And it brings down the sidewalk too, the sports complex, from the rest of the walking trail.
Well, I would really like to see something on St. Mary's Road. And I feel like the 4th Street, once we have, you know, know what's happening with the bridge, I think it'd be more logical to wait on that one for the next cycle so that we don't end up planning for something and then something changes at the bridge.
Yeah, because we already have some, from the National Park Trail thing, we already have some idea of how that would work or some progress on that. So we wouldn't necessarily be too behind on pursuing that.
And that's part of what the 4th Street, part of that project is of that, those public meetings and talking about. That's one of the sections we looked at.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we could, again, and I'm not sure how far we can take it. And I'm not sure how far we're going to take 4th Street. We can look at it. If that would be your preference, I think we need to try for something.
I would agree with that. I like that idea.
I also don't hate the going after the St. Mary's one because if we can, because I know with the national parks, we've been talking about taking that as possibly a bike trail too all the way to where it meets 61 if we could. And so depending on how far out that we could do that, that potentially brings St. Jude within a safe walking path or a safe bicycle path to other parts of town, of the community. Because right now, St. Jude is kind of, and it's all...
Isolated.
Yeah, you've got to cross the, you know, you've got the highway shoulders and all that stuff. It's your only walkway.
You know, it used to be in the county. There's a little St. Jude, something there.
Yeah, so I don't hate going after that project. Because even if we can only do a short bit now, at least it'd be, potentially be done if it were awarded to move further in the future.
Because what I would like to look at is at least getting it up to the Amaro House. Yeah, that connects to the Park Service.
Yeah.
Okay. We will pursue this. Thank you.
Where'd your brain go?
All right, redistricting.
Getting confused with Beckett-Rabault.
That's what I was thinking.
You need to make a choice.
I know, I was too. Beckett-Rabault, we were talking about.
Is that further down than the Amaro House?
What is it?
Yeah.
The Beckett-Rabault, or is it on this side?
It's first.
It's first.
And then Amaro? I'm going to have to take a drive.
Yeah, it's Amaro, that means Beckett-Rabault.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, they're right there next to each other.
I thought about it.
Well, there's a Zerrinella. And then the dry white.
So we had our public hearing at the last meeting, no comments. We have not had any comments on Facebook. We haven't had any comments in the office. So you have two choices for redistricting based on the request that we reduce the amount that's in the jail area. Figuring about 10% of jail is not transient, more permanent. So you have option three and option four. You have pictures in front of you. So what we'll have to come up with is an actual written description and that's what gets adopted into the ordinances. That's a lot of them. So you've got the two designs.
Block five?
The numbers meet the requirements. Is option three, is that as continuous and contiguous as you would want? Or is option four better when you've got four as a block, three as a block, two as one? They're just more condensed. But it will make changes. And some people will be taken out of their district. And some of these...
Four?
Or three?
Well, both.
With four, essentially as the board sits now, Mike and I would swap.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
You've got to stand for election, right? I don't know how that works. Maybe you can swap.
So if you are zoned, not zoned out, if you're drawn out, then you've finished serving up until the next election cycle. And then that seat is open.
Right. We're okay, I think.
We'll try to figure out a way to split you guys up. We just do it.
So Ashley, what's your opinion?
I mean, three's kind of a funky shape, but I feel like it's the most consistent for residents now. There'll be some change with Lynn Drive, I think it is. But largely, the representation stays the same. With the exception of maybe departments too, I guess.
There's that triangle that goes up Lynn, goes over to 61, and comes back down. That was an oddity because again, trying to make the numbers work.
I think that label right there.
That's now included in that zone.
Yeah.
And one of the progress changes also.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I'm fine with either option.
What about Mike?
I think he and I were, from as brief as we've mentioned, I think we're both okay with either option. If, is there any, from cities' aspect, is there anything with the district thing that...
I mean, everyone ends up with the same vote. They just have a slightly different ballot. Mike, the last time I talked to him, he was, like Ashley said, happy with either option.
I think option four is cleaner.
Yeah, I agree.
But I still like the original option one or two that was at least less disruptive to the existing map that we have. But, you know, having that sliver on option three, I think is confusing to people. Number four cleans everything up. It's just the most disruptive out of all of them. But it is, it does clean everything up, though.
So with the transferring of the properties recently and the possibility of development going up out there and, you know, it's not going to be in five years, but maybe in 10 years. So that would get placed into one of these wards. I mean, then we'd be looking at, of course, we'd be looking at redistricting then.
Yeah, right.
So that's kind of why, to me, I don't think the funky shape matters as much because in 10 years, that could change on either map. in 10 years, that could change on either map, and, because right now, it's just the apartments there that, that you're looking to represent as far as people. There's no houses out there or anything like that, so I don't, I don't think the funky shape matter is that big of an issue.
Option three only takes one side of Progress Parkway, option four takes all of, everything south of Point, or Point Base Drive, or, yeah.
Yeah.
And all the way over to 32, I-
Yeah, I can see that one.
I mean, I just, I think it's a cleaner definition of the-
Right.
That's fine.
I think it was option two that I liked the best out of all of them, but I don't have that episode.
So does that change polling places for some of the, no polling place change?
It could, I mean, it is a ward that has votes.
They'll be notified by that.
I don't, I don't think so.
It will be notified, yeah.
Because-
In one and two?
They still vote same place, it's a different ballot.
No, or, no, some of them will have to go to-
Well, three and four are both vote at-
Legion.
Seraphim and St. Mary's Road, which will become one, instead of voting at the Legion, they'll have to vote at City Hall, where the majority of the people won't change, no, but there is a small section of section four, our current Ward four, that will have to switch to Legion.
To Ward one.
Because there's a one to Ward one.
The county will notify them, you know, the change, so.
I'm fine with whatever, really. I mean, I'm still in my neighborhood, my neighborhood's together, so the people that I live closest to will still be represented by me for as long as I serve the board, so there's no, there's no, there's no real change there for me.
We better decide, right?
Yes, please.
We're gonna flip a coin?
Y'all got an opinion?
I think option four visually makes more sense.
I agree.
And I mean, I realize in 10 years, every, every person can do it.
Well, we have to look at it anyways.
So I think, yeah, what's happening now, I think option four just visually makes more sense to me.
I agree.
Yep.
Anyone disagree?
All right, and we'll bring back an ordinance, if we prefer. Do you like that name?
Does that change houses?
You're a good man.
I want it changed.
What?
I want it changed.
What would change?
And that's all we've got.
That'd be easier.
Okay, any other business?
Just being so fast.
All right, if there's no other business, we'll adjourn the work session.
All right. This is awesome.